Sorry about that, Alex. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have fifteen items on this evening's agenda, and I will ask the city clerk to please read Agenda Item Number One.
Minutes of the City Council meeting, August 22nd, 2022.
Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to accept and place on file.
Motion made and second to accept and place on file the minutes. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed? The meeting minutes are filed 11-0. Agenda item number two.
Now is the time for the public hearing on the petition for Massachusetts Electric and Verizon, New England, to install a new joint-owned pole, Pole 1884, on Bolton Street, beginning at a point approximately fifteen feet west of the center line of the intersection of Bolton and State Streets, and install a new guy wire from Pole 18 to Pole 1884. This is to relieve stress on Pole 18 from cables going down State Street. Order number 22-108666. We also have recommended conditions from city engineer Thomas De Perseo regarding said petition.
Okay, this public hearing will be taken in four stages. First, with a public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant, then questions from the public, then public speaking in opposition, and then questions from the council. So we'll start the first part of the public hearing with the public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant. Please state your name and address, please.
Michael Fraser, 245 South Main Street, Hopedale.
Mike.
Petitioning to install new pole 18-84 to replace a tree guy. The engineer did speak with the... a butter where the guy would be going, and she's okay with it.
Thanks, Mike. Anyone else speaking in favor? Is any members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Hearing none, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Any members of the public have any questions? Any questions from the public? Hearing none, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. Any public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Hearing none, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. Any questions from the city councilors? Questions from the city councilors? Any questions from the city councilors? Questions from the city councilors? Hearing none, I'll close that portion of the public hearing and the entire public hearing and is currently in public service. Agenda item number three.
Now is the time for the public hearing on the petition for Massachusetts Electric and Verizon, New England, to install a new joint-owned pole, Pole 2-5, on Broad Street, beginning at a point approximately 240 feet northwest of the center line at the intersection of Broad and West Main Streets. Order number 22-108667. In addition, another communication from the city engineer with recommended conditions.
Again, this public hearing will be taken up in the four stages: public speaking in favor, questions from the public, public speaking in opposition, and questions from the city councilor. We'll start the first part of the public hearing with public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant. Please state your name and address for the record, Mike.
Michael Fraser, 245 South Main Street, Hopedale.
Thank you.
This is to install a midspan pole between poles existing poles two and three for the purpose to shorten the span and to install new overhead equipment.
Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Hearing none, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Absolutely. Again, please state your name and address for the record.
Catherine Flores, nine Broad Street. I just wanted some clarity as why they're putting a new pole there. My concern is overdevelopment of that corner, so I just want to make sure that there's not something leading to something more. I'm not knowledgeable, so if someone could walk me through.
It's just to put on new equipment. You can only put like one piece of equipment on each pole, so the other poles around it have transformers on it, so we just need a new pole to put up a different piece of equipment.
Thank you.
That's all. You also with that, Kathy?
I am, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions from the public? Any other questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Hearing none, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. Public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Members of the public speaking in opposition? Hearing none, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the city councilors? Any questions from the city councilors? Any questions from the city councilors? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing and the entire public hearing, and this is in public service. Agenda item number four.
Now is the time for the public hearing on petition for Massachusetts Electric and Verizon, New England, to install a new joint-owned pole, Pole 2-5, on Simarano Drive, beginning at a point approximately 450 feet north of the center line at the intersection of Simarano Drive and Cedar Hill Street for new overhead equipment. Order number 22-108668. And also, we have conditions from the city engineer relative to this position.
Again, this public hearing will be taken up in the four stages: public speaking in favor, questions from the public, public speaking in opposition, and then questions from the city councilor. We'll start with the first portion of the public hearing with public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant. Again, please state your name and address for the record, Mike.
Michael Fraser, 245 South Main Street, Hopedale. And again, this is installing pole 2-5 between existing poles two and three for... to allow the installation of additional overhead equipment.
Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the public? Are there any questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Questions from the public? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the city councilors? Any questions from the city councilors? Questions from the city councilors? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing and the entire public hearing, and this is in public service. Thank you. Thanks, Michael. Agenda item number five.
Now is the time for the public hearing on the revised application for special permit from W.P. Marlborough, Mass., owner LLC, to build a multifamily residential project in the business district consisting of 140 units and three buildings to be located at 339 Boston Post Road East, McGee Farm, per the court ordered remand, order number 20-22-107995R.
Okay, so this is a little different. This public hearing, again, will be conducted in the same four stages that you just heard, but a couple of housekeeping items before we get started this evening. So this public hearing, it's court ordered, and they've remanded the issue back to the city council. And so let me just read what the court has said. So the remand order states, "The public hearing shall be for the limited purposes of considering the changes to the previously contemplated draft decision to grant a special permit for the project." So what does that mean? So the topics for the public hearing, there's six of them negotiated conditions. First is a $20,000 payment for the city council to study fund a recreational trail for pedestrians along the city-owned sewer land adjacent to the site. The second one is construction will not begin until April 14th, 2023. The third, within six months after the issuance of the final occupancy permit, the applicant to make a written request to Mass. DOT asking it to reconsider the traffic signal at Route 20 and Village Drive in the site's main entrance. The fourth one, within six months after the issuance of the final occupancy permit, applicant's traffic engineer shall update the traffic analysis and make a written recommendation as to the best use of the $200,000 paid pursuant to condition 8D. The fifth one, the affordability percentage for the complex will increase from 15% to 20%. And then finally, increase the number of charging stations from two to four. Additionally, I want to acknowledge several items for the public record. So again, these following items are acknowledged as part of the public record. First is a land court's remand order dated May 31st, 2022. Second, settlement agreement by W.P. and the city council dated May 17th, 2022. W.P.'s revised special permit application by letter dated July 1st, 2022. Four, a letter from the city solicitor to the city council dated July 18th, 2022 with a reference table, settlement agreement, and special permit decision in the revised application. And five, all materials and testimony previously submitted as part of the public hearing on the initial special permit application for the project which are incorporated by reference. So our city solicitor, Jason Grossfield, will say a few words before we start the public hearing. So Jason, if I could turn it over to you for a moment?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. As the president indicated, this is the culmination of a month's long mediation effort which resulted in a remand order from the land court. During the course of the appeal of the denial of the original special permit, both the city council and W.P., the applicant, engaged in mediation. We had a well-experienced former land court judge, Judge Sands, who was the mediator. And as the council knows, after a lot of hard work and time, the parties were able to reach a mediated resolution. The mediated resolution resulted in a motion to the land court, and the land court has remanded this matter back to the city council now for further review. As the council president indicated, the further review is specific to the six negotiated changes to the special permit application, and those are reflected in the decision before you tonight. The public hearing is particularly, as the judge noted, limited for those purposes. And ultimately, the court order requires the conducting of this public hearing and then a council decision on whether to grant the special permit as revised. And with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. So with that, we'll start the public hearing, again, with the same four stages: public speaking in favor, questions from the public, public speaking in opposition, and then questions from the city council. And again, it's focused on the six negotiated conditions and the draft permit. So with that, I'll start with the applicant. Again, please state your name and record for the file.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the city council, Dennis McKenna, representing the applicant, W.P. Marlborough owner, 100 Congress Street, Boston, Mass. Mr. President and members of the board, the council president read the six additional items that were negotiated, as Attorney Grossfield said, over a couple days in mediation with a former land court judge, and those are all included in the decision, so I won't read those again. I will just say that in addition to those, all of the other conditions that were in the original decision remain in this revised decision. So with that, I'll close my comments.
Thank you, Mr. McKenna. Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor?
Good evening. My name is Steve Peck. I do live in Marlborough. And from what I can see, these developers have bent over backwards to help make a beautiful project, and I encourage our city council people to accept this, as I can't think of a better thing to go in that spot at McGee's Farm. Thank you.
Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the public? Any members of the public have questions? Please state... come up to the microphone and please state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is William Nato. I live at 59 Milden Ave. here in Marlborough. I feel stupid asking this question, but could you go over the six negotiated points again? I think they're really important that I understand them.
Absolutely. So the first one, again, these are the negotiated settlement conditions. $20,000 payment for the city council slash designated to study fund a recreational trail for pedestrians along the city-owned sewer land adjacent to the site. Construction shall not begin until April 14th, 2023. Within six months after the issuance of the final occupancy permit, the applicant will make a written request to Mass. DOT asking it to reconsider the traffic signal at Route 20, Village Drive, and the site's main entrance. Within six months after the issuance of the final occupancy permit, the applicant's traffic engineer shall update its traffic analysis and make written recommendations as to the best use of the $200,000 paid pursuant to condition 8 Delta D. Number five, the affordability percentage will increase from 15% to 20%. And finally, they'll increase the charging stations from two to four. Are there any other questions from the public?
My name is Joe Denain. I live at 55 Westminster Drive in Marlborough. So that's the villages. My question is with respect to the occupancy permit. Does that mean, within six months after the permit, that theoretically the property could be fully populated? I'm not sure the timing of this event.
So I will... you want to answer that, or?
Yes, I'll turn it over to Mark Bradford, but I'll say generally, he's his senior vice P. with Waypoint Properties. It's six months after the occupancy permit, a full occupancy, so we cannot begin construction. We can't have... begin on the permit until April of 2023. I'll turn it over, but typically, these projects take a long time to build and then a long time to fully lease out, but I'll leave it to Mr. Bradford.
Sure, thank you. So the building permit, the earliest that can be pulled is April of 2023, at which point construction would start on the apartment community. Construction generally takes about eighteen months to build a Class A market rate apartment community. The certificate of occupancy, which is noted, is what's provided by the municipality to the community to begin occupancy, and that's at full completion of the property. So call that eighteen months from April of 2023, and that's when residents would be allowed to start moving in.
Eighteen months beyond April of 2023 is when you'll begin to populate.
That's right. During which time the community will be built.
And at what point does... at what point... forgive me for my confusion. At what point does the requirement or the opportunity to then do a traffic study to determine the safety of Route 20 resulting in a new project on the villages?
Sure, so six months after that construction period of roughly eighteen months.
So, okay, about eighteen months.
So if I can maybe shed some light, based on some recent experience, if you start in April of 2023, assume eighteen months, I'll tell you it'll be closer to two years, but if they want to be... think it's aggressive, that's their point. I would say April of 2025, they would have the building completed. They'll probably start with some partial occupancy as some of the units complete, but until they fully occupy it, which typically isn't on day one, it'll probably be six months... I know you'll probably want it sooner, but it'll probably work six months or longer to fully occupy it. So you're looking... again, this is how I look at the project, late 2025, early 2026, for that final occupancy permit. And then six months after that, so now you're talking 2026, they would then start the traffic study, at which time you show the concern of Route 20 would be addressed by that point. Route 20 would be completed.
Thank you. I would have a question therefore for the council, based on my concerns. I'm not in opposition, having listened to what you're talking about, based on the timing. My question is, in light of the fact, the first time around, this council, in fact, placed a heavy regard on the safety of the people who live as residents around that particular location. I would hope that that emphasis on safety continues. That's why I asked those questions. And my comment, just in terms of maybe shedding some light on what it might be a concern of people who live where we live, so you can take it into the timing here, what am I asking for? The question would be, in light of all of this, I would ask the council to keep in mind that there are probably a thousand residents who live in the area impacted by this effort. And enough said in terms of the traffic that's then forthcoming from those residents. It's a significant safety matter, and as a resident and a resident of the city, I applauded the council the first time around when you recognized that significant safety factor and you voted in opposition. I would ask those people who voted either for or against to continue with that same thought process as this process continues. Just to draw a picture, all right? If you come down Village Drive, there are two cars now, one in, one out. If you come out the To Be Named Street from the other side, there is two cars, in and out. If you go west and east, there are two more cars, east and west. And if you consider the project that was done, the study was done in 2016, which talked about turning lanes, that's now eight cars. So draw a square on that land that sits between Village Drive and the opposition. I classified as a what and day... gunfight at OK Corral. There are now eight cars entering a square of limited size and space, particularly at rush hour, with guns blazing. I, for one, have already experienced a case where I was driving a car with two, with my wife and another lady, and they're going off to dinner and pulled out into Route 20 to unbelievably be hit, be almost hit within 12 inches, sideswiped by a truck that, in effect, took the westbound lane around the westbound car, took the eastbound lane as an opportunity to pass and cut in.
So Joe, I'm going to try... I apologize, but I'm trying to do my job to follow the court order, which is to stay focused on the six negotiated items. And so I'm tying yours to the traffic study, which I understand, that traffic study, should this, depending on where this go, will address some of that, maybe to your liking, maybe not, but that... those conditions, we heard those concerns and folks voted that way back when we first took up the permit.
Okay, but so then not to appear in opposition, to appear from a standpoint of an intelligent approach to at least a thousand or more citizens and travelers, I'm calling upon the council to take a sincere interest in how this proceeds and the potential impact on all of us who live there every single day and the people who travel east and west. Take the picture of the OK Corral, please take it home with you, because that's a reality. And I know, traffic study, traffic study, traffic study. Forgive me for my impatience, and thank you for the time you're allowing.
Thank you, Joe.
Mr. President, one additional point of information. The reason, just... this may help. This was negotiated by the city for the city, the timing of this. So in that six months after, we are going to make the request to the DOT to put the light in that we want them to put in too. We're going to do that. The second request is, if they won't do that, will you have your traffic engineer tell us the best way to use the $200,000? Considering now that you have full occupancy here, how best can the city use the 200 if DOT won't put a traffic light in there? And we're going to ask again that they do. We're in favor of it. But if they won't, how best can the city use the 200 for safety there? And that was the negotiated condition. So that's a little bit more information on the timing and the request that came to us, and we were in agreement with that.
Thank you, Dennis. Any other question? Again, I'd like to go for people that haven't spoke first, but we'll get to everybody. So any other questions from the public? Questions from the public? Again, please state your name and address.
My name is Ronald Francis Helen. I'm in a butter. I live at 108 Victoria Lane. I'm dead set against this. I can think of much higher and better uses for the property, but my question will go to one of the six. Not to mention the cost of the city, once we have to have more cops and more fire and a bigger education department, where is the logic in having a study done for the traffic four years from now, after everything's in place? They're going to throw $200,000 at our feet? The traffic will be backed up to fireflies with a traffic light? That doesn't mitigate anything. The city should buy the land and turn it into open space and have the Four H Club use it or somebody where it would be much more alleviation on the already over-congested part of town.
Thank you, Joe.
It's a joke to think four years from now, you're going to do another study. By then, it'll be too late. The buildings will be in place. Can you answer me that question? Where is the logic to have a study four years from now?
The study will be how to best use the $200,000 that we've committed to the town, that the town asked us for.
So hang on. All right, you, lower the voice. We're all humans here. No need to get all passionate.
Yeah, I'm speaking loud, I'm deaf.
All right, all right, so I'll make that exception. Nope, that's okay. That's okay. The intent behind the traffic study later is, we can't get a traffic light now. Know what... that's dead. It's behind us, it's gone. So the only way to figure out if we can get one is, once the project is built, filled, and then study the area to see if it's then capable for a traffic save. I can't do that now, because we've shown the numbers do not work right now.
Mr. Ossing, I read the study from the department. Of the nine criteria to get a traffic light, the state said, "We do not satisfy one, and we will never get one until cows fly over the moon." I really hope the city council considers the safety of everybody down there, the congestion and traffic. We have two other housing units going into the city right now. I'm all for pro... I'm pro-business, very much pro-business. My family's been in this town 150 years, but this is not the highest and best use for that property. It should remain open space simply for the congestion and the safety of the residents in that part of town.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public with questions? With questions on the six negotiated items? This is what we're focused on, and I'm going to try to reel everybody back in. Yes, sir.
Once again, I'm William Nato, 59 Milden Ave., Marlborough. I go by there quite a bit. It looks like you're already doing site work. I see excavators there. Are you already doing site work, laying pipe and stuff?
No, sir. That's the Mass. DOT is using that as part of the Route 20 project. Any other questions from the public? Steve?
Good evening again. My name is Steve Peck. I'm in a butter at 64 Victoria. And as part of the date in starting this up, I'm wondering if there can be an agreement as to contacting DOT right now, before they finish the road, so that two years from now, you don't dig up a brand-new road to make your connections to water, sewage, and to the electric company putting up poles. Right now, that's all being dug up and designed. It will be... if we have a brand-new road, brand-new sidewalks, brand-new cuts and things like that, if we could, maybe we could get them to do a little rearrangement so that this project could go in smoother and less rebuilding of the road.
Again, Steve, those aren't part of the six negotiated conditions, but I will tell you the city...
Isn't the date part of it?
The date part is, but the city engineer is already working with Mass. DOT on connections for water and sewer, so that is correct, sir. Any other questions from the public? Questions from the public?
The traffic study they had done in 2016 was rather extension... extensive, however, was just a recommending body. It wasn't... they had no approvals to go forward. Confusing me, and hopefully you, was their recommendation at the time, they aired, because in one place, they recommended that the speed limit be reduced down to 30, which part of that road has a 30, unusually, the other half at the same time has a 40. I call that problem. So they recommended 30 miles an hour as a speed limit back then, and in another place, they recommended 35 miles an hour. So this is just a question, why do, for safety reasons, do we have to wait for the lowering of speed limits on that section of the road?
Again, not part of the public hearing. We can address that to the Traffic Commission if you'd like, but that's not part of the...
if you'd like, but that's not part of this public hearing. I, I understand your question.
Thank you, my only, so thank you, sir. I'm just asking all the members here, who theoretically represent, represent us, particularly Ms. Wagner. That's on the table from a group in 2016, it's been sitting there. That same study said that, that, that part of the world was in the top 20 in Massachusetts for accidents and dangerousness. Hey, that's on your plate. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Joe. Any other members of the public have questions? Any questions from the public? Any members of the public have any further questions? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public. Public speaking in opposition? Members of the public speaking in opposition? You can stand in line or come up one at a time as it goes, so.
If you'll pardon me, members of the council and, and audience, I, I will tend to be very specific, but maybe a little long-winded. I'm wearing this hat, it says, "We, the People." Five years ago, my wife and I took a vacation, we went down to Washington, D.C.
Joe, Paul, I, I wanna be, I'm, I'm, no, hang on.
Point.
Well, it's gonna be a quick point, because you said long-winded. We're focused on six conditions, and I'm not gonna let the public hearing go off course. So you're either gonna play by the rules, or we'll shut you down. So go ahead, the floor is yours, Paul.
Agenda item, item 10, it's gonna have a chance for us to speak again?
Nope, this is, this is, again, we're operating under a court order, Paul. You know how that works, working in all your years in the ZBA. So we're being told what to do. So I'm not gonna deviate from what we're being told to do. So you have those six.
We're being told by the land court what to do, is that correct?
We're being told by the judge and Jason.
Yeah, the judge and the land court.
Yep.
Well, I did some investigating.
Again.
You know, in the whole country, there are two land courts.
Paul.
One in Massachusetts and one in Hawaii.
Paul, you, you know how running a meeting goes. You're either gonna follow the rules, I'm gonna ask you to leave.
I'm addressing the land court.
The, the, land court's not part of the decision, there's six negotiated conditions, Paul, that are up for discussion this evening.
Are they conditions that were generated by the land court?
No, they were conditions negotiated between the city council and the applicant. The land court is just remanding us to take those up to discuss. Land court has nothing to do with that.
No media, the media they got involved is not from the land court?
The, the negotiated decisions are between the city and the applicant, Paul. That's it.
Okay. Well, then I would request that the city council look at this seriously and cause a delay in any final decision made on this issue. The traffic is gonna have a problem because they're using the sewer line for a trail, is that correct, Mr. Developer?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. And where is that sewer line gonna begin and end?
It, it goes through the site? Is that your question?
It's where?
It goes through the site.
Through the site, but where does it start? Does it start at Route 20 somewhere?
Yeah, I guess technically, I don't know the answer to your question.
And it goes over to Phelps Street, from what I'm told?
I'm not sure it goes all the way over to Phelps, it goes behind Kane School, whatever the, Helen Drive, I think.
Well, my concern is if they're having a, an entrance spot from Route 20, and I, I've been getting rumors about this, that it's gonna be somewhere opposite the, the Winsky Mall, where the Chill Restaurant exists, somewhere opposite there is where the entrance will be. And I'm saying, if that's gonna be a crosswalk for pedestrians who want to go take a, a nice, long walk along the trail, where's the safety issue there? All right? And similarly, I've been also told, there's another crosswalk that might be planned coming out of the Joey Lynn Mobile Home Park, to go across the street to the Shell Station. Where's the safety issue there? Those being contemplated in the, the traffic safety plan that these people are considering?
I can't, I can't speak for that.
So, so this isn't the que, this is, members speaking in opposition, this isn't time for questions. You can state your case, Paul, and we'll go on to the next individual.
You want me to go into something else now?
Well, I, as long as it sticks to the six, I, you, Paul, you know how meetings are run, so I'm a little disappointed in your behavior, you know how this works.
I think you're putting a closure on this part of it.
We're doing what the court has ordered, Paul, and you know how that works.
Okay, I will then defer to any other people that want to speak on this matter.
Thank you, Paul. Anyone else speaking in opposition? Please come up to the microphone.
My, my name is Arthur Skerr. I live at 54 Village Drive. I'm a resident of the villages of Marlboro East. I was told by many of my neighbors in talking about tonight's meeting, that there's no purpose in coming here tonight. This public hearing is a done deal. It's a fate accomplie. It's been dictated by a judge in the Marlboro Court. The members of the council have decided to vote. Of what good is this public hearing? The decision has already been made. I strongly oppose this settlement agreement. I urge the council to say no and put it down. This agreement allows the project to begin in April 2023 without traffic lights. All along, the villages and the residents have said, we want traffic lights first. Let the study come in first, the $200,000 study, make that first, then start your building. It's the wrong way around. More accidents will happen. People will be killed. This is a bad deal, it's a bad agreement. And if you vote in favor of this, the guilt will be in your hands. You will not have acted responsibly. The city council must follow the will of the people. This is a democracy. The results here are being forced on the residents. The residents and the people who live nearby, they don't want it. I urge the members of the city council not to accept this arbitration agreement. Reject it. Do whatever you can. Stay the proceedings. Don't vote in favor of it. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
And I'm calling for a stay of the proceedings. This has been done before, it's often done. Stay the proceedings.
Thanks, Art. Any other members of the public speaking in opposition? Hey, hey, hey! Folks, this is city council, not a sporting event. If you're gonna act this way, you will be removed from the chamber. All right? Thank you. Will?
William NATO, 59 Milden Ave. I do take exception to, to some of the negotiated points. I think that $200,000 for that amount of road surface and stuff, and whatever other work you would have to do, drainage, whatever, that doesn't cover anything. I think the $20,000 for a walking path, I, I, I'd be ashamed of yourself for, for selling out for this. The tra, I'm a, I'm a weekend warrior, I go to Home Depot every weekend, I go to the transfer station. Do you know what a horror ride that's turned into to get across there, besides the infrastructural work going on? That road's in horrible shape. By the time they get through building, bringing all the trucks in, all the excavators, all that stuff, that road won't be worth anything. And it's been going on since the big dig, it's horrible. You're not putting the best interests of the town here. I mean, I'm not even worried about the schools and stuff, we're a growing city, we need to grow, but we can't just do it unplanned, this is crazy. It doesn't make sense. I'm, I'm obviously against it, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Will. Anyone else speaking in opposition?
I wanna thank Arthur for getting up there and speaking, gave me a up to, to, to think a little bit further. I'm speaking in opposition to the project, I would agree with Arthur, there should be a stay. I'm really asking the council to consider the whole area of safety and, and put a stay in. Think of the people, make the decision, at least going on the two six, 2016 study, to change the speed limits to 30 miles an hour. And, or other accomplishments that might make, in your minds, a safer project before you approve the project. So yes, I wanna speak in opposition, believing in what Mr. Skerr said, it's absolutely accurate, and you can still accomplish your needs, but do it in the right way. The road, the path you were already on, get back on the path, and please help the citizens. And not the fact, I know, the, the paperwork said there's gonna be 500-something thousand dollars in new revenue. I could care less, I could care about the safety of the people who live and breathe here. Thank you for the time you took.
Thank you. Any other members of the public speaking in opposition? Any other members of the public speaking in opposition? Any other members of the public speaking in opposition? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the city councils? Are there any questions from the city counselors? Councilor Orm?
Thank you, Mr. President. When will the city council be taking an official vote on this project?
Agenda item 15.
What's that again?
Agenda item 15.
So it is tonight?
That is correct.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You are welcome. Any other questions from the city councils? Questions from the city counselors? Questions from the city counselors? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing and the entire public hearing. Thank you, everyone. What's that, you want a recess? Okay, agenda item number six.
Communication from the mayor regarding informational notice of appointments of Heath Karp and Amanda Mayo to the cultural council.
Councilor Dumas?
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to accept and place on file.
Motion made in second to accept and place on file appointments, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, they have filed 11-0. Agenda item number seven.
Communication from the mayor regarding informational notice of appointment of Joshua Daigle as the state member of the Community Development Authority.
Councilor Dumas?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, move to accept and place on file.
Motion's made in second to accept and place on file the appointment by the state, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, it is filed 11-0. Agenda item number eight.
Communication from the mayor regarding proposed amendment to City Code, Chapter 125, Section 6, Salary Schedule, and a proposed job description to create a new position of Substance Use Prevention Coordinator and Intervention Specialist within the Health Department.
Councilor Irish?
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to refer to the Finance Committee, please.
Motion made in second to refer to the Finance Committee, is there any discussion on the motion? Councilor Doucette?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I think this is a, a big win for addressing some of the needs of the community, and I'm looking forward to having someone focusing on these issues within the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Doucette. Any other, Councilor Orm?
Yes, thank you, and I commend the mayor and the Board of Health for recommending this position. The letter attached to it was noted by the Board of Health Agent, the Public Health Director, that they were also voting for this position. I think it's a needed position, I've worked in the Health Department for many years, we've had these type of people to do opioid education, as well as other drug abuse needs. There are plenty of groups out there, unfortunately, the regionalization of this didn't work out the way it was supposed to. This will get it started again. You know, regionalizing sometimes works, sometimes it doesn't, but this is definitely needed, and I, I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Orm. Any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, on the motion to refer to Finance Committee, all those in favor? Opposed, is referred to Finance, 11-0. Agenda item number nine.
Communication from city solicitor Jason Grossfield on behalf of Councilor Ossing and Councilor Nathan regarding proposed zoning amendment to Chapter 650, Section 40, location and height of buildings relative to attached roofs or entryway and porches.
Councilor Roby?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna move to refer to the Planning Board and to the Urban Affairs Subcommittee, set a public hearing date of October 3, and to advertise.
Motion's made in second to refer to the Urban Affairs Committee, send to the Planning Board, set our public hearing for October 3, and to advertise. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, it is approved to send to Urban, planning, public hearing October 3, and to advertise, 11-0. Agenda item number 10.
Communication from city, from solicitor Jason Grossfield regarding revised application for a special permit from WP Marlboro Mass Owner LLC to build a multifamily residential project in the business district consisting of 140 units and three buildings to be located at 339 Boston Post Road East, per the court ordered remand in proper legal form, Order Number 2022-107995.
Councilor Roby?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna move to accept and place on file the communication and to move the special permit language down to number 15.
Motion made in second to accept and place on file solicitor's communication to move the item down to agenda item number 15. Any discussion on the motion? Councilor Doucette?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just wanna make note of a Scrivener error on number 16, this is on page 10-6, says the hearing was closed on August 22nd, it was not, obviously, we continued the hearing tonight, so that needs to get corrected.
The, the solicitor, based on whatever decision we make, will be going through all that, but no, good catch, no.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilor Doucette. You're welcome. Any other comments or questions? On the motion to file the correspondence and refer to, or move to agenda item 15, all those in favor? Opposed, it is moved to agenda item 15 and filed. Agenda item 11.
Application for modification of special permit from attorney Brian Falk on behalf of ED Naturals LLC, DBA COSA dispensary, to amend Condition 8 relative to the hours of operation for the adult-use marijuana retail establishment located at 505 Boston Post Road West, Order Number 1922-107881H.
Councilor Roby?
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to refer this to Urban Affairs Committee, set a public hearing for October 3, and to advertise.
Motion made in second to refer to the Urban Affairs Committee to set a public hearing for October 3, and to advertise. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, is approved to send to Urban, public hearing 10-3, and advertise, 11-0. Agenda item number 12.
Application for modification of special permit and site plan from attorney Brian Falk on behalf of Abashon Realty Company, Inc., to allow for a standalone Chipotle restaurant with a drive-through facility and eliminate the proposed bank and retail addition to the plaza located at 661 Boston Post Road East.
Councilor Roby?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, move to refer to Urban Affairs, set a public hearing date for October 3, and to advertise.
Motion made in second to refer to the Urban Affairs Committee, set a public hearing for October 3, and to advertise. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, is approved, 11-0, to send to Urban, public hearing 10-3, and to advertise. Agenda item 13.
Minutes of Boards, Commissions, and Committees.
Mr. President?
Councilor Doucette?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Motion to accept and place on files the minutes of the Boards, Commissions, and Committees.
Motion made in second to accept and place on file all the minutes, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, the minutes are filed, 11-0. Agenda item 14.
Please. Mr. President?
Councilor Doucette?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Motion to send the claims to the Legal Department.
Motion made in second to send the claims to the Legal Department, any discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed, they are going to legal, 11-0. Reports of committees. Council Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Quick note is the finance committee will be meeting on September 19th, 2022. Time to be announced at a later point. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Irish. Council Dumas.
Personnel will meet as well on Monday night. I don't know the time either. Thank you.
Personnel on 9/19 as well. Council, anyone else? Council Anders.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to act on things tonight. I can't wait until October 3rd. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion of the suspension of the rules for item number two, three, and four on tonight's agenda, which are utility petitions for mass electric in Verizon.
So your motion is to remove the items, suspend the rules, remove the items from public service and put in the hands of the council, or items two, three, and four. Is everybody clear on that?
That's correct.
All those in favor of suspending the rules to take two, three, and four out of public service and put them before the council? That is approved, 11-0. Council Anders.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now I'd like to make a motion to approve the three utility petitions, items two, three, and four, together with the recommended conditions of the city engineer as included in the city council agenda.
Motion.
This is the vote to approve.
Motion made in second to approve all three of the Massachusetts electric petitions with the conditions set by the city engineer. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed, so all three petitions are approved with the conditions of the city engineer, 11-0. Any other reports of committee? Hearing none, agenda item 15.
Order number 2022-107995R, deliberation and vote on the revised special permit application for WP Marlboro Mass. Owner LLC to build a multifamily residential project in the business district consisting of 140 units and three buildings to be located at 339 Boston Post Road East per the court order remand.
Okay, so councils, so now this is the opportunity to discuss comments on the revised special permit application or anything else on the permit application. So with that, I will turn, Council Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's important that we all understand what's happening and what's at stake with tonight's vote. I was one of the six people who voted against the special permit. At the time, the vote was about approving the special permit for the project or not. The vote we take tonight is not about stopping this project. Once the lawsuit was filed, the circumstances changed significantly. Tonight's vote is about whether or not we hold on to control of this project, which includes limiting its size and scope. The risk of losing this case if it goes before a judge is considerable. When mediation was presented as an option, I volunteered to participate along with Councilor Roby and with the support and guidance of attorney Grossfield. I began the process feeling confident that we had a strong case and that we should bring the case before a judge. But my position changed, however, after conversations with attorney Grossfield and actually reviewing cases that were similar to ours. So looking at other cases for towns like us and situations that went before a judge. The turning point came after having an opportunity to talk with the media, who's the mediator, who was excellent. He was, as we mentioned, a retired land court judge that I believe had like a 40-year career and was very knowledgeable. I definitely benefited from hearing his perspective. Tonight's vote is not about whether you approve the project or not. I know emotions are high in the room, and that's what you'd like to see this project go away, but that's not what tonight's vote is about. It's about accepting what came out of mediation and approving the revised special permit or placing our fate solely in the hands of a judge. If I thought we had a strong case, I would take our chances with the judge. I don't believe we have a strong case for the following reasons. Our mediator, again, the retired judge, stated the fact that the developer had significantly changed the scope of this project and met every one of our demands works in their favor for a favorable ruling. City councillor, city council members, we focused heavily on the tra, on the impact of traffic and subsequent impact of safety. However, we do not have data to back that up. Partly, the fact that the COVID hit and shutdown worked against us, but the fact is, if we go before a judge, they're going to look at facts, they want data. We don't have the traffic study and the hard data to back up what we're concerned about. Our own city engineer, this also works against us, and I so value our, I say this prefacing it with I so value the expertise of our city engineer and know that he works, he just, would never question his integrity, so if he says this, I take it as fact. He said with the redu, this was in, this was actually cited in the petition. With the reduction of the project from the four buildings to three, the revisions to the site access design, the proposed traffic improvement, the mitigation payments now being proposed, the applicant has made significant concessions and a genuine effort to reduce the city's concerns as they relate to traffic. In my view, they've been adequately satisfied. Again, reminder, in the traffic study that did occur, there was, I think, nine different warrants, which are criteria that they look at. We didn't come close to meeting one. It's not like we met eight, and if we really pushed it, and we also have working against this, that there's a major redesign for Route 20. It has been acknowledged that this area needs improvement, which is why the state's sinking a ton of money into redesigning it and making it more efficient, which also worked against us. Until that happens and we see the impact, the state is not going to spend money, one, for we didn't meet a single warrant, and two, the major redesign's going to happen, so we haven't even given it a chance to work. So that, those are important points to remember. If a councillor here tonight still wishes to oppose the mediated agreement and the new now special, updated special permit, and believes that we should risk relinquishing all control over this project and take our chances with a judge, I respectfully ask you to cite the cases that you've reviewed that gives you that informed opinion, why you think we have a chance if this goes forward in front of a judge. There's too much at risk here to vote based on unsubstantiated opinion, and respectfully, it would not be a responsible vote. In addition, it's important to remember that if the revised special permit does not receive a two-thirds vote tonight, and the case then does go before the judge, we risk ruling in favor of the plaintiff for the project as originally submitted. That means four buildings instead of three, right smack up against Route 20, not set back from Route 20 with beautiful plantings and trees to screen it. That means 188 units, not 140. Construction could begin right away, not delayed till 2023, which no, completion could be two years out, so it could be sped up and happen much faster than that. The, putting it off till April was a concession that we put, we fought for and won, and there would be no further studies. I know there was frustration, why doesn't the study happen first? Because if we spend money on a traffic study for empty buildings, guess what? We're not going to meet any of the criteria. So we need to have the people in to show the impact of the traffic, and then, okay, what are we going to do to mediate? If we don't meet the top criteria for a traffic light, if that makes sense, well, what else can we do instead? We will have $200,000 to address the what else can we do? If we let this go to a judge and we lose, we have zero. We have nothing. There's no more traffic studies, there's no money, and the other things, like the increase from 15 to 20% affordable units, that's gone. The $20,000 to make the pathway to walk through this, that's gone. So again, tonight's vote does, no vote does not make this project go away. I think it's really important to have that in your minds when you're ready to vote. I do appreciate the safety factor, and that's why I'm voting for this special permit, because I feel this is our chance to limit the scope and have the smallest project. I don't, we don't, there's no reason, there's no informed reason to believe that we will win in front of a judge. It's going to happen, so with safety in mind and the impact to the community and the residents, I strongly believe we need the smallest possible project to go in there, and that's what this, this project gives us. And I'm also not done fighting for traffic calming measures, and I want the developer to pay for it. And if we vote in favor of this, that's exactly what will happen. So I appreciate you taking the time to hear what I have to say, and I hope this was clear, and we take all this into consideration before the vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Wagner. Any other councillors, questions from the councils? Council Dusset.
Questions or statements?
Floor is yours.
Okay, fine. I'm also supporting this as well, and I was one of the opponents at the beginning. I think it's important to understand, we, if we vote against this as a council, we do lose control of what this development's going to be like. It could go back to the original proposal with four buildings versus three that have a greater impact on traffic issues. You know, I think that, you know, the road construction that's going on in Route 20 is still going to go on for a couple of years. This is going to go on in peril off the, you know, off the street, but by the time Route 20 is completed, and it will hopefully, with, with the work that they're doing on Route 20 right now, hopefully it'll make the villages easier to get, enter and exit with the crossover lane in the middle. Okay? We'll see what hap, we'll see what happens with the new road. There is, there is a design change to make that better, and I'm hoping that that does work. You know, if, on the other hand, things don't work out, and we're a couple of years ahead of here, and there's issues that need to be concerned, then the traffic study is going to be very important, and at least we'll have the funding to do that and address it at that point. So, you know, this is, you know, we tried to get a traffic light there. It went to the governor. We had a letter that was signed by all the councillors and the mayor requesting a street, a street light there, and nothing came from that because it's a state road, they control it. So this, you know, we did the best we could. We got to see what happens in the next round, but I think we need to stay with what we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Dusset. Any other comments from the councillors? Comments from the councillors? Council Orm.
Comments or questions? Which one, Mr. President?
Anything you'd like, Councilor Orm. The floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. And the council knows that one of my major concerns is the traffic down there, and I think it's all of our concerns, including the two councils that represent that area. I mean, just go down for a day, you don't need a major traffic study. Just sit there and see. It's ridiculous. I saw almost three accidents going to the transfer station on one Saturday, and that's light traffic on Saturdays sometimes down there. It, it's a traffic issue. I've always been of the belief, if it does have a risk of going to court, I'll be there supporting the residents, saying it is a traffic issue. Our police chief gave us traffic studies. There's a lot of accidents down there. My concern is that we don't put this ahead of the issue of traffic. My concern is that we get it addressed first. It sounds like the applicant's willing to work with us, too. That's a great opportunity, maybe to look at some other options. It might not be a traffic light. I know in Hudson, they put up rotaries. How about sharing land on both sides and putting up a rotary? That possibly may work. Council Landis, I know you're smiling, but did you ever think about it?
I'm laughing, I'm not smiling.
Oh, you can smile, but it may work. Have we looked at other opportunities? What I don't want to do is vote for something in my conscience, and if someone gets injured, paralyzed, or dies, I don't want that in my conscience. As a city councillor, never mind as a human being, we're going way ahead of the curve here, letting this go on. I'm willing to go see a judge on this. I'm not worried about the risk, because I think we have a good case, and that's my statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Orm. Any other comments or questions from the councillors? Council Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. I didn't prepare anything. I wasn't really sure what was going to happen tonight, but I do want to say thank you to Council Wagner for her remarks. I was the partner with her as one of the councillors that voted in favor of this the first time around. I thought it was going to be a tough battle, but it was very interesting to see after the case was made with the judge, former judge who sat with us at mediation. I'll use the term, I think her eyes were opened, and so I think her points that she made tonight are all valid points. If we don't approve this tonight, it goes to court, and we're, we don't know what project will wind up coming out of that by a judge at a court, because they could take all of our conditions away, they could go back to the original project, we really don't know. For me personally, I certainly heard the residents, but this is a big city, so listening to residents, and I know nobody likes the NIMBY term, but I drive 20 all the time. I drive lots of streets in the city. They're all crazy, they all have accidents, they all have concerns, and so we have to look at the bigger picture, not just in the neighborhood. But I think the reality of the traffic study was, I think some people thought that it was going to solve everybody's problems, instead of realizing that the traffic counts aren't there. You're not going to get a traffic light. And I think they tried to project with the building that was going in, the numbers, it wasn't just a magical, let's study the traffic that exists now. They took into consideration the new people that would be coming at that four-way intersection and said, there will not be enough. So build the building, have another traffic study, there's not going to be a light. It's just not going to happen. And I think the, the dreaming that the traffic light was going to solve all our problems was nice, and we certainly would hope so, and it would be nice to have one, but I think the important issue is the, the, the suit and the ability for us to have control, as Council Wagner already said. So I certainly hope, I know many of you are struggling how to vote for this, especially those that voted no the first time around. I hope you paid attention to what she said, and I hope you take it to heart as you think about this. I'm going to move to approve. I don't think there has been an actual motion to do that. So I will move to approve, and unless people are still want to speak, the city clerk needs to read the conditions.
So there's a motion made and seconded to approve the revised special permit application. Council Anders.
Just a couple of quick comments. First of all, I want to thank Council Wagner and Council Roby for the hard work you did, meeting with the judge, meeting with the lawyers, because I feel very strongly, you two, that we brought some of the control back to us. If not, the control could have been with some judge somewhere that really doesn't know Marlboro. I think the other thing we got to keep in mind, I, I travel Route 20 quite a bit, there's a lot of traffic there, but you know, we've added to the traffic by approving additional projects, but you know what Whelan just did? You know what Sudbury just did? You want to see the apartments they're building. I, Hudson, they got a development going down on Chestnut Street there, you know? So just what Whelan's doing, Sudbury's doing, Hudson's doing, we're doing, can be a lot of traffic on Route 20. We might as well accept the fact, and you know what? The 140 units we're approving isn't the thing that's going to croak us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Anders. Any other? Council Perlman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to appreciate the comments made by my fellow councillors, as well as the residents who came out. I know it's difficult to express things at a public hearing, and I know many of you have been working on addressing this project for quite some time, and we deeply value those statements and having come to the council meeting. I want to kind of speak to some of what Council Wagner said and sort of address that, you know, the city council is not in a good position. We are likely going to lose this case if we went to court. I say that now having only gone through my first year of law school, but I've seen a lot of cases involving municipalities, and it does not favor us in this regard with the facts on this case. And weighing the opportunities that are in front of us, it is so important for the city council to have that control. And for months and months, members on this council and our department heads work to mitigate the project, to make it smaller, to allocate money to both address some of the traffic concerns to the best of their ability, to fight for the light, which unfortunately did not happen, but that fight doesn't, doesn't stop now. So if we are to approve the project, we can still work on those mitigation factors, whether it's through site plan review in our department heads, or we can continue to watch how the project comes to formation, or being able to continue to advocate for a light, that doesn't stop here. And I think the opportunities presented with the money, whether it's the $200,000 after the opportunities presented with the money, whether it's the $200,000 after the occupancy, the trail that will come from it, I think it's so important that we have the reduced size, which the four buildings that were initially put forward, I would be very concerned if that went forward on Route 20, the way that it was originally proposed. This council fought to reduce the number of units dramatically. And I think it's very challenging, because oftentimes on the city council, we're faced with these very downstream decisions, right, where we're not able to have the most control. And so I think moving forward, we as a council should continue to think about housing writ large in development and traffic in the city as a large structural problem that we should be addressing, and not just coming up by project by project, because we aren't in a position to have that control. So I think it's super important, moving forward, that we continue to keep that lens and use projects like this as an example, that, you know, we were able to turn down the project, but they are able to sue, and then we lose that power. So tonight, I think it's so important that we vote for the project, not because we want more development in the city, but because it's important that the city council retains control. And we are weighing all of the factors and making a decision that will ensure that we are having the best project available and not an increased project that could cause even more traffic and even more issues. So I pledge to continue with the fellow councilors to watch this project if it moves forward, and being able to make sure that the project remains as safe as possible, all of the mitigation measures are met. And I think that that is our call to action moving forward, so that this project is safe, because those safety concerns are real, and we're seeing all of the traffic, and people are going faster, and we should be reducing the speed limit. All of that should come into play, and it's our responsibility that it doesn't end here, but that we continue to look and watch this moving forward. So thank you for listening, and I look forward to hearing others' comments as well.
Thank you, Council Perlman. Council Dumas?
Thank you, Mr. President. I voted for this project the first time around, and the reason is because I'm on the west side. So you're probably thinking, what does he have to do with this project? Well, my first term here was a difficult one, as every decision is. I, we all have lots of sleepless nights here trying to make sure that the safety and of the residents are here. We've talked a lot about a control, and let me explain a little story for you about my ward in my first term. We were actually sued, same situation as a council and a project, about regarding a project, and we actually won the case, however, so their special permit did not go through. However, the developer still built something, and it's something that the residents did not want. And it's a construction, it's light industrial, now there's a lot of noise, more traffic, bigger trucks, and it's literally writ against a retirement community of 55-plus. Having learned that my first term was difficult, I felt like I did not fight for the residents enough. I own that. So when you all talk about safety and conscience and accidents, we get it. We hear you. However, what the control that we have now takes over all of that, because we do think of you every single time we sit here, and I can speak for myself, and the 10 other people here, we generally care about this position. We do not do it for the money, that's for sure, because we care about this community, and we care about you at the end of the day. Unfortunately, Council Wagner, that was a tough lesson for her to learn, and a lot of the new councilors here, I learned it very quick. So I hope that when we vote yes, you know that we are thinking of you, and that we want the safety, and we did everything we possibly could for you and for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Dumas. Anyone else? Any other councilors? Council Navin?
Thank you, Mr. President. A lot of very good comments have been made here, and I am realistic enough to know that I am not going to improve upon them, and I certainly don't want to do a lot of repeating of them. But I did vote no the first time around, so I did think it was important to speak. I would like to start, as some of the councilors did, by thanking Council Wagner and Council Roby for going through this process. They went above and beyond to spend their time and energy to go through this mediation process, and it is not easy. Council Wagner, I'd also like to thank you for your explanation tonight. You have done quite a bit of homework on this, and from the beginning, you have advocated for your residents and for your ward of what you thought was right and what you thought was best. And I know you and I have talked a lot about it. I know everyone in this room has spent a lot of time talking to you about it, and thank you for that, because you're putting in the work every day, and we're lucky for that. So thank you for that. I don't want to repeat a lot of the points that you made, right? I think everybody kind of sat here and has talked about control. It's no surprise. I have not been supportive of this project. I thought it was too big. I thought it was going to generate too much traffic. I thought that it was too close to the road. I thought that there would be health impacts, similar to a lot of people. I voted no. I voted no in committee. I voted no the first time it came around. Being on this council isn't just about voting yes or no on these projects. It would be a heck of a lot easier sometimes if it was, but it wasn't, right? And so there was a lot of work that went into this, and Council Roby led the process as Chair of Urban Affairs to work with the applicant to really pare down this project. And it was a significant victory to move it from four buildings to three. It was a significant victory to move it back. We're talking about a giant land development, which has only a tiny parcel, to be honest, because they can only develop a tiny parcel of it, but it's a large parcel that will still remain in conservation. It was mentioned earlier tonight that we should have just bought the property and kept it as open space. Absolutely. I wish that had happened. It was a big check. I'm not sure how the residents of the entire city would have reacted to us paying five to $10 million, but it would have been a conversation I wish I could have been a part of when we had that opportunity years ago. But as Council Wagner mentioned, this is not a vote about that. If this was still a vote of like, do you want the project or do you not want the project, I'd still be a no. But what I can't do is vote no after knowing what the other land court decisions have been. And I think there were some comments that would have been elaborated on tonight. Mr. Jent, I know you were starting to talk about the land court decisions. Across the country, land court decisions do not often go the way of the municipality. I do not know why. I'm not in law school. I'm never going to be in law school, thank goodness, and I, so I thank you, Council Perlman, for taking that on. But knowing what I know about these decisions, I cannot in good conscience take away any of the control. And I understand that the residents are not happy about the thought that there are going to be three buildings, but what's worse is having four buildings go in there and having the traffic be even worse and having it be more dangerous. Council Orm, I, I think it's great that you want to go down and you will sit with the judge and you will advocate. I appreciate that. I cannot take that chance. I understand that this is not popular, but I think it's right. And a small anecdote, I tell people this all the time. When I was a kid, my mom was a guidance counselor at the middle school, and she had this little sign with a little cartoon on her front door, and it said, and it was, you know, meant for middle school kids to be nicer to each other, but, you know, it, it happens every day in life, and it was a little sign. It said, what is right is not always popular, and what is popular is not always right. And I believe that, and I believe that we learn that every day here in this chamber, and I understand that there's going to be a lot of disappointment with that. But I will be voting yes to keep this project as small as possible and as, as beneficial to the city as it possibly can be without having some of the more dangerous impacts. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Navin. Any other councilors? Any other councilors? Hearing none, there's been a motion made and seconded to approve the revised application for the special permit. I will now ask the clerk to read the conditions.
The city council pursuant to its authority under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, and the zoning ordinance of the City of Marlboro hereby grants the applicant a special permit to build and operate a 140-unit multifamily dwelling residential project as shown in the plans filed, subject to the following conditions. Which condition shall be binding on the applicant, applicant its successors and/or assigns? One, construction in accordance with applicable laws. Construction of all structures on the site ought to be in accordance with all applicable building codes and zoning regulations in effect in the City of Marlboro and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and shall be built according to the plans, as may be amended during site plan review. Two, compliance with applicable laws. The applicant its successors and/or assigns agrees to comply with all municipal, state, and federal rules, regulations, and ordinances as they may apply to the construction, maintenance, and operation of the use. Three, site plan review. The issuance of this special permit is further subject to detailed site plan review by the Site Plan Review Committee in accordance with the City of Marlboro Site Plan Review Ordinance prior to the issuance of the building permit. Any additional changes, alterations, modifications, or amendments as required during the process of site plan review shall be further conditions attached to the building permit, and no occupancy permit shall be issued until the applicant its successors and/or assigns have complied with all conditions. Subsequent site plan review shall be consistent with the conditions of the special permit, and the plans submitted, reviewed, and approved by the city council as a special permit granting authority. Four, incorporation of submissions. All plans, photo rendering, site evaluations, briefs, and other documentations provided by the applicant as part of the revised application, the application, and as amended or revised during the application hearing process before the city council, and/or the city council's Urban Affairs Committee are here and incorporated into and become part of this special permit, and become conditions and requirements of the same unless otherwise altered by the city council. The final architectural design of the site shall be reasonably consistent with the plans submitted by the applicant. The final exterior features of the site, including landscaping, shall be maintained in good condition and shall be reasonably consistent with the plans submitted and representations made to the city council. Five, stormwater and erosion control management. The applicant its successors and/or assigns shall ensure that its site superintendent during construction of this project is competent in stormwater and erosion control management. The applicant shall also hire an independent erosion control expert with credentials acceptable to the Engineering Division of the City's Department of Public Works and the City's Conservation Commission. This individual shall be responsible for checking the site before, during, and after storm events, including weekends and evenings, when storms are predicted. This individual shall ensure that no untreated stormwater leaves the site, consistent with the state's and city stormwater regulation. This individual shall ensure compliance with the approved sequence of construction plan and the approved erosion control plan. The applicant its successors and/or assigns shall grant this individual complete authority of the site as it relates to stormwater, stormwater and erosion controls. Six, lighting. Exterior lighting at the site shall be downward facing and shielded to minimize impacts on the neighboring properties, with lighting planned for the site, for the site to be reviewed and further conditioned during the site plan review process. Seven, affordable units. Twenty percent of the dwelling units at the site shall be made available as rental units at affordable prices to renters whose annual income does not exceed 80% of the area median income adjusted for family size as determined by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in perpetuity or the longest period allowed by law. The affordable housing units, in accordance with the provisions of Section 650-26 of the zoning ordinance of this, in this condition, the affordable housing units shall comply with all requirements for inclusion in the subsidized housing inventory of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development. Prior to obtaining a certificate of occupancy for any unit within the use, the applicant its successors and/or assigns, in coordination with the city and the, and its community development authority, shall file all required submissions to DHCD for inclusion of the affordable housing units on the SHI, and shall diligently take all actions necessary to include the affordable housing units on the SHI, including without limitation, preparing and executing a regulatory agreement and declaration of restrictive covenants and/or other restrictive instruments necessary to ensure compliance with said zoning ordinance in this condition. A marketing plan and all other required documentation, and all other required documentation, excuse me, all costs associated with complying with this condition, including but not limited to the DHCD process, recording of all documents with the registry of deeds, and the marketing plan for the affordable housing shall be borne by the applicant its successors and/or assigns. Eight, site access and roadway improvements. A, the use shall access Route 20 with a single driveway entrance located directly opposite Village Drive. The applicant shall provide an emergency access driveway off of Route 20 to, on the western side of the site, with an access or gating system approved by the site plan review. B, the applicant its successors and/or assigns shall coordinate with the city and the Massachusetts Department of Transportation to ensure that the development of the use does not conflict with planned improvements to Route 20 in the vicinity of the site. The final design and configuration of the site's access driveway shall incorporate the latest design of the planned Mass DOT improvements to Route 20, and shall be approved by the Mass DOT and the Engineering Division of the Department of Public Works. C, in addition to the planned improvements to Route 20, the applicant shall, in coordination with the Massachusetts Department of Transportation and the Engineering Division of the Department of Public Works, make the following traffic calming improvements in the vicinity of the site. One, a radar sign, speed sign on the southern side of Route 20 to the west of Victoria Lane. Two, a radar speed sign on the northern side of Route 20 to the east of Village Drive. And three, rectangular rapid flashing beacons at the proposed crosswalks over Route 20 in the vicinity of the site. D, prior to the issuance of the building permit, the applicant its successors and/or assigns shall provide to the city, to the city in the amount of $200,000 to be used by the city council or its designee towards, towards the study, design, and construction of a traffic signal at the intersection, Route 20, Village Drive, and the site's main entrance, provided, however, that if the Massachusetts Department of Transportation does not authorize said traffic signal within three years following the issuance of the final certificate of occupancy for the, for the use, then the funds must be used by the city council or its designee for the study, design, and construction of comparable transportation safety improvements in the vicinity of the site, for beautification improvements along Route 20 in the vicinity of the site, or another project designed to improve transportation and aesthetics along Route 20 in the vicinity of the site. E, within six months after the issuance of the final certificate of occupancy for the project, the applicant shall make a written request to Mass DOT, asking Mass DOT to reconsider the traffic signal at the intersection of Route 20, Village Drive, and the site's main entrance, based upon traffic data reflecting the actual full occupancy of the project. F, within six months after the issuance of the final certificate of occupancy for the project, the applicant agrees to have its traffic engineer update its traffic analysis and make and provide written recommendations to the Marlboro City Council as, as to the best use of the $200,000 paid pursuant to Condition 8D above for traffic safety improvements in the area of the site and Village Drive, taking into consideration the full occupancy of the project and ongoing improvements in the area made by Mass DOT. Nine, transportation alternatives. A, prior to the issuance of the building permit, the applicant its successors and/or assigns shall provide a payment to the city in the amount of $20,000 to be used by the city council or its designee to study and/or fund shared transportation options, including but not limited to a shuttle service to provide access between the site and its neighboring residential properties in downtown Marlboro. B, prior to applying for a building permit for the use, the applicant its successors and/or assigns shall submit a request to the Metro West Regional Transit Authority to add a bus stop in the vicinity of the site and its neighboring residential properties. C, prior to the issuance of the building permit, the applicant its successors and/or assigns shall provide a written summary of the program sponsored for the site's residents to encourage shared trips and carpooling to reduce vehicle trips to and from the site, and shall submit an annual report on this program to the Building Commissioner on or before January 30th during each year that the use remains in operation. Ten, open space. A, the applicant its successors and/or assigns shall grant a conservation restriction to the City's Conservation Commission or its designee over the areas of the site identified as CR Area 1, CR Area 2, and CR Area 3, including any area outlined in red at, shown on the plan attached, the restricted land. The form of the conservation restriction over the restricted land shall be approved by the city solicitor and the city conservation officer prior to the issuance of a building permit. The conservation restriction must be approved by the Conservation Commission, the city council, and finally signed by the mayor before being approved by the State Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs. The conservation restriction must be granted and recorded prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for any unit within the use, or at a later time agreed to in writing by the city conservation officer. The conservation restriction will allow for the mowing and management of portions of CR Area 1 to enhance wildlife habitat and meadows as approved by the Conservation Commission, and shall allow for the passive recreational use of CR Area 1 by the site's residents. B, prior to the issuance of the building permit, the applicant its successors and/or assigns shall provide a payment to the city in the amount of $20,000 to be used by the city council or its designee to study and/or fund a recreational trail for pedestrians along the city-owned sewer land adjacent to the site to provide public access to connections between Route 20 and the site's neighboring residential properties and Kane School. Eleven, issuance of building permit. Construction of the project shall not begin until April 14, 2023. Issuance of a building permit shall be conditioned that, such that construction of the project may not begin until April 14, 2023. Twelve, charging stations. The applicant agrees to increase the number of charging stations at the project from the original two to four charging stations. Thirteen, sewer pump station improvements. Prior to the issuance of the building permit, the applicant its successors and/or assigns shall provide a payment to the city for its Department of Public Works or its designee not to exceed $35,000 to be used for, used by the city for the installation of an inline sewage grinder at the Boston Post Road Pump Station in the vicinity of the site. Fourteen, snow removal. Snow removed from driveways, parking areas, and walkways at the site may not be stored in a manner that creates a shortage of onsite parking for residents. If onsite snow storage creates a shortage of onsite parking for residents, the applicant its successors and/or assigns shall have stockpiled snow removed from the site. Fifteen, other approvals. The applicant its successors and/or assigns shall comply with an order of conditions from the City's Conservation Commission and a floodplain special permit from the City's Zoning Board of Appeals. Sixteen, recording of decision. In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 11, the applicant its successors and/or assigns at its expense shall record this special permit in the Middlesex South Registry of Deeds after the city clerk has certified that the 20-day period for appealing this special permit has elapsed, with no appeal having been filed, and before the applicant has applied to the Building Commissioner for a building permit. Upon recording, the applicant shall forthwith provide a copy of this recorded special permit to the City Council Office, the Building Department, and the City Solicitor's Office.
Okay, council, there's been a motion made and seconded to approve the revised special permit application. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Council Orm?
Just quickly, can I ask that there be a roll call on this, please?
Roll call on every special permit, but yes, you are correct.
Thank you, just in case. I didn't know if it'd be passed.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll. Council Roby?
Yes.
Council Wagner?
Yes.
Council Dumas?
Yes.
Council Landers?
Yes.
Council Dusek?
Yes.
Council Brown?
Yes.
Council Navin?
Yes.
Council Irish?
Yes.